Okay, at seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and Darcy, if you'd pull the rule, please.
Moore?
Here.
Mar?
Yeah.
Moody?
Here.
Ingstrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
Thank you. All right, item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, universal, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four then is perfection and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to that, please? Larry, second? All those in favor say aye? Those who say no, carry. All right, item five is public comment time. I know a lot of you folks are here because of probably the number eight issue, but if anybody else has got anything else to say, now's the time. And nobody will go on then to, actually, let's move Paula, Paula down to, let's move her down to item below eighteen, all right, you guys? Yeah. So that moves us then to item seven. Tracy, come on up, please, if you go to the podium, please, and then tell everybody your name, because we are broadcasting, so.
Hello, I am Tierney Hofer. I am a teacher at Clayton Elementary, that's my full-time job, but a board member for the Garnaville Community Daycare. And then I was brought on board by the Clayton County Foundation for the Future in June to lead the Childcare Coalition. So I have my team in the front row. My name is Tracy Craigel. I work for the Gottenberg Hospital Family Resource Center. And my connection to daycare is I have a two-year-old in the Garnaville daycare right now.
My name is Lili Andrea, I'm also from the committee, I'm from Garnaville, and I have two boys in the Garnaville daycare. So in 2023, Clayton County conducted a survey to the citizens to better understand the supply and demand for childcare and develop a plan for what problems we need to address within the county. We understand that Postville is Clayton and elementary county, so that is why we're here. Based on the survey, we had nine key findings, and first, children's finance. Took those findings and put it into a study for us, or a summary for us, I believe that was shared with everybody. So if you need to see that, that is on there. But basically, from those nine key findings, my team now is working on three goals. So the first one is to increase the number of regulated childcare spaces in Clayton County by a minimum of forty-eight spaces by 2030. The study founded that we are short one thousand seats. Goal two, we are trying to increase the current and future childcare labor pool of Clayton County through training and partnerships, and that's the one that we're here to talk about a little bit tonight. But lastly, first, goal three is to increase the awareness of the need for regulated childcare in Clayton County by engaging local employers and other community partners in childcare solutions. So thinking back to goal two, we're working on a number of different things, but one of those things that we are working on is our Clayton County Childcare Solutions Fund. So Tracy, we'll talk a little bit about that. Sorry, Olivia. Okay, so the Childcare Coalition Solutions Fund, this program is designed to enhance the wages for the Clayton County childcare providers by incentivizing the IQ 4K levels. See, the IQ 4K, for those that don't know, is a program that is funded by the state and rewards the daycares for holding themselves to the higher standard. So they are in Postville, so their current rating is a level four.
Is that good or bad? I saw the level.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Okay.
Most daycares are at a zero level, and then there's, Garnaville is at a one, Manona is at a four?
Three.
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 So four is very good, and five is the highest, yes.
Awesome, wow.
And when we speak of being leveled, particularly speaking of a daycare center that is in Clayton County and is an in-home provider, that's outside of Postville. So she's a level more. This program is funded by the state and it awards every two years, and then I have to re-certify it every two years to receive the award again. And this is to sustain and have reliable, hardworking dedication employees. The average employee makes about sixteen dollars an hour. It costs a hundred and ninety-nine dollars a week for an infant, that's eight hundred dollars a month. So that's fourteen percent of the average household income, and seven percent is considered affordable. So raising the rates to cover those wages are not ideal. So this is to boost the longevity and to encourage staff members to stay on longer and hopefully help meet their wages. Another thing that we will do is we will encourage our staff members to participate in teach and wage. Teach is a state program that will help anyone working at a childcare center get their CDA credential, their associate's degree, or their bachelor's degree in early childhood development by only paying ten percent. They do offer a couple different programs, whether it stays eighty percent or sixty percent, depending on which one they do, and this will also give them bonuses. After they have completed the teach program, they can apply for wages, which would give them a bonus once a year for a minimum of five hundred and fifty dollars, depending on their rating. So that being that we encourage them to do, and then they will be a degree in early childhood development. So all of this that we're talking about tonight is the Childcare Solutions Fund is our local plan that we are working on, and all of the pieces that Olivia went over is state-funded. Those are programs that the state sponsors. So our program is going to be locally run and locally monitored, the Childcare Solutions Fund. And we have two ways that we want to accomplish this goal. But right now, we'd like to meet the current need. So we have five daycares and road centers within providers that are leveled on the IQ 4K program right now, and we want to reward them for meeting those standards. We're going above and beyond the base of licensure that they need right now. And in order to do this, we need partners to fund the initial program. So the first step is to go to all of our city councils and our county board supervisors to ask for the initial funding. That's our first phase. At the same time, we'll be working on phase two, which is to build an endowment fund that will eventually take over the payments for all these childcare payouts that we're talking about. So right now, we're just looking for a budget request for this next fiscal year for your consideration. For the city of Postville, what we're looking at is asking if you could support eighteen hundred dollars towards this program, and then that would allow your area provider to get a little over four thousand dollars in this first year's payout. Because collectively, from all of our partners, we'll be able to provide that type of funding. Anything, because I'm missing anything? So I think you are our fourth city council that we have talked to so far. McGregor is on our agenda here the next week. Do you have any questions after that?
I have one. So this state funding, is this new?
The IQ 4K?
Yeah.
That has been around for a while.
It has.
They called it something else. I can't remember what it used to be called. But IQ 4K has been a new term now for maybe four, five years.
Okay, all right.
So let's say that we agreed to give you eighteen hundred dollars, and what, what's that four thousand, what is it? That'll get stuck back into the whole program?
So eighteen hundred dollars from you guys, it would go into this pot, and then we have it calculated by a formula of how much is getting paid out to each of the providers in the IQ 4K program. So your local provider that is in Clayton County, right on the edge of Postville, they would be getting that four thousand fifty dollars by our formula. So we'd be pulling money from the board supervisors, and we have two hundred local boards that we're going to be asking funds for as well, to make up that four thousand.
Well, the Postville one, just want to hear what you're going through, the daycare, so good luck to you.
Yep, I know that Al Maki County has their own wage enhancement program, yes. I wasn't sure how they distribute that funds, but we wanted to at least present the project, let you guys know about it, and you make the decision from there if it's within your means to do that.
Well, did you have the same opportunity to create a wage enhancement thing? Like, how does Al Maki want to get generated, and you have the opportunity to do that same thing?
From my understanding, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, they had some state money come down that was kickstarting the program, and that was a pilot project from the state. And there was only a select few communities across the state that were selected to do that. That funding is not there.
Six or something, yeah.
So, yeah, that funding is not there anymore, unfortunately.
Have you gotten any other state grants or work with, you know, there's, like, RC&amp;D is just kind of blessing our community. They do get us, help us write grants, get grants, all that from Darcy.
Our, our C&amp;D, yeah.
Right approach, right.
Yeah, okay.
Would they be covered by our C&amp;D?
I'm not sure, probably.
Well, it'd be worth, I mean, it'd be a good question for you to ask.
There might be other things that can defer money into wages instead.
There are a few local grants that we are looking into. This is just a relatively new project that we're kicking off and trying to get started right now. I think we started this in June. So relatively new, trying to get this whole together for our communities. We're taking what our neighboring counties are doing, we've looked at what Al Maki is doing, Howard County's also done something, and then, you know, our southern county, Dubuque County, has a similar program as well. So we're trying to start small, so we make sure that it's sustainable, that we can manage it and keep growing, and, you know, make, at least be able to move the needle more than what they've been funded through the IQ 4K program.
Well, I only mentioned that we had done it because I want to wish you good luck.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, if needed.
Yes, yes.
Correct. Any more questions, you guys? Thank you. All right, that takes us then to item eight, the Housing Code Procedures and Housing Ordinance, Landlord Questions and Answers Session. So we're on that one now, so I'm sure we got, most of you folks are here for that one. And if you come up, please, you come up to the podium, tell us who you are and questions and whatever, try to get them answered. All right, somebody has.
Not at all. Been a long time since I stood up here with everybody. Nice to see y'all. So a few quick, just, questions, I guess we just. This housing code that you have, the stuff that we discussed, is it ten years ago or better? Probably we did all that in here as landlords and kind of hashed out what we thought this should be, right? So this is, this is already something that we've discussed, we're just deciding to implement it today, correct?
No, we've actually had a housing code since we originally.
The housing code.
Yeah, this, this is a change to that.
Gotcha, okay. So then my, let me go on to your, start with your fees, just a curious question, and I'm here kind of, I still own some commercial property here in Postville and whatnot, but a lot of my family owns rentals still today, so they asked me to be here, and I, I'm here. Your landlord fee is fifty bucks, that's an annual fee for anybody who has one rental or a hundred rentals, doesn't matter, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what we're?
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
The rental unit registration fee on your paper that you handed out, is that an annual? Or is that a one-time database? Because your landlord fee has annual assessment right beside it, and then your rental unit registration fee is just single family, go in forty bucks, multi-family forty plus twenty for you. But it doesn't stipulate that's a one-time fee or a cost database, or if that says annual fee? You know how we all are, unless it's seven one-time.
So, so your question is, Trevor, what, what?
My, my question is, is that fee?
Yep.
For the rental unit registration, an annual assessment? Or if it's a one-time fee to create a database of rental units?
It's a one-time.
And so you know, I'm standing up here, I'm not actually against inspection.
No, no, we, we need to, we need to talk our way through this, so, yeah.
Yeah.
This is due to us, too.
Right, right.
It looks like a one-time fee to me.
Well, and I may get, I may get shot on the way out when I say the next thing I've got to say.
You got you. We will address that.
It's a one-time fee, but that's the way we understand it, yeah.
Okay. Well, then that makes a little bit of sense to the whole thing, because in there it also had, and I caution you on, so it says that you have to get an inspection every two years, right?
Correct, yeah.
One, I would hope you would roll this out informing landlords, I wouldn't say one at a time, but not trying to get everybody tomorrow to within sixty days that every unit in Postville is inspected and ready to go. A little bit of, I don't want to call it a slow roll, but a realistic roll out of, you know, call my mom and say she's got to do her units, and then a week later, get somebody else. You get, you get kind of a system rolling on those.
Well, it's not just a big.
Yeah, it's just all of a sudden, everybody's calling every inspector and every department is trying to get done over here all at one time. I just don't see that being very efficient.
So you're looking for a grace period?
What's that?
Kind of a grace period?
Well, or even a, even a little bit of an implication as to for each landlord when their time starts. Like, it, it doesn't matter who you pick, but rather than saying, everybody's got to be compliant in the next sixty days. And again, I'm going to pick out my mom because she won't hurt me when I leave. But if you, but if you told her tomorrow, her time, her time is starting now. You guys pretty much know all the landlords in Postville now. I mean, it's not like anybody's hiding in the woods, really, other than maybe somebody might have one unit or two units that you don't know about. But most people, you do know who they are, so to get that rolling that way.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Let's say A to F.
Yeah, 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 has to be done by this date, and then, and then your, your next alphabetical one booked and carried here has to be done by that. I did like to see in here that you did have a, a, or the complaint, unless we talked about again a decade ago, that someone filing a complaint. If they're found to file to file a bogus complaint, the city will then charge them for doing so. That way you don't get into the people just complaining to complain. Yeah, and, and, because you don't like a rental unit next door to you, doesn't make it something you can complain about all the time. The one that I'm a little concerned about for everybody here is you say that each landlord has to hire their own certified inspector. That leaves the city and everybody here. You're going to have a problem with consistency in inspections. So code is always a readable thing, right? So when I go, when I read a code, I can look at it, I've been a professional builder almost all my life. There's code, and then there's always a little gray in between, right? So I could have somebody come in and say, oh, those windows are horrible, you need to do something about them. And that's what my inspector says. Maybe the next inspector that walks in there says, eh, they're good enough, they're compliant. So I worry about an inconsistency of what, what you're trying to do is get a consistent level of safety, a consistent level of housing in Postville. Do that, you need a consistent inspector. Something Decor did, just give me an example, because they've implemented all this. So they do their inspections, they do inspection every three years on a single family, every two years on multi. So it's something they've already got working. When they first implemented, and I don't want to put any extra weight on the fire department, but what they did was get one of their fire department people to go out and do these inspections. So there was a consistent eye in every building that they went into. It took a little bit to implement it, you're not going to get it all done in one month, or it might take a whole year to get through everything in Postville. But that same guy went out and looked at everything. This is one that most people hate, that would actually require this rental registration fee to not be a one-time fee, but be more of an annual fee. But there are two, then for everybody here, you're not trying to, each of us hire our own inspector. I mean, maybe I pay a hundred bucks, you pay two hundred bucks, and where it's more of a, city, city management.
Uniform inspection, that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about. In order to do that, you need a.
Standardized process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have what we get with it. The licensed housing inspector has to, is required to use the housing inspection form.
Right, but, but.
That we give them.
Yeah, I, I hear you, but, but my point to that is, there's, there's always room for interpretation. So if, and here's another one, there's always bad actors. I own a hundred units. Maybe my inspector likes me, go out to dinner together. You're not going to run around, whatever he gives you is what's going to be on the thing. And I'm not saying that would happen, what I'm saying is, uniformity is, is important in what you guys are trying to accomplish here. And again, what you're trying to accomplish is not a, a bad thing. Keeping in mind also that in Postville, it's a very unique tenant role that's here. Again, I sold everything off that I had in Postville that was residential five years ago. You don't own anything anymore. But at our peak, we had a hundred and twenty-seven units in Postville. The tenants here are awfully, awfully hard on us. This is what it is, and it's fine, it's part of owning them here, but that is part of the whole thing, so. When you're working with the landlords, keeping a little bit of that in mind of, you know, I can have this place looking beautiful, one hundred percent ready to go, anybody's looking. Thirty days from now, I rent it to somebody, and it could be trashed beyond belief, and you could walk in the door and go, what kind of horrible landlord are you? When I, it was good, it looked good to me. You know, and they rented it, and now because of the tenant, it's in bad shape. So, so again, I may or may not buy more rentals back in Postville, but it's one, if you treat all of your landlords out here well, and Darcy was always good with the call here and there with the mattress in the yard or something, rather than, doesn't always have to be, you know, we're going to file this complaint, do that, you know, just a little bit of back and forth will make everybody happy. So, uh, these. That was kind of, kind of all that I, I've got looking at it, like I said, it's because I don't see a, I don't see a problem with the spirit of what you're doing. Implementation is just really important in how you do it, so that everybody out here is treated the same with how they're inspected, and, and you roll it out in a fashion that doesn't make it tomorrow, it's, it all has to be done, and some of it comes back to, even if, even if the fees were a little more annual, but you guys took on one of the onus of getting inspections done. It can be hard for somebody, I've got a fair amount of landlords that own two or three pieces of property. You know, I got to find an inspector, did I get that done? What year is it, what's the month, when was it supposed to be? If it's, if it's a little more tight, a little more bureaucratic, as to this is what it is, and your inspection, you send out that letter, and your inspection is, is coming up next month for these properties, they know, they didn't have to hire the guy to come in and do it, you've got the same guy doing everything. And again, take it for what's worth, and that's what I, I see as a, as a way to implement this and hopefully make everybody happy and accomplish what you want. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor.
So my name is Chastity Usha, I'm here for Christine and Yarz. I actually have a letter from her, and I'm going to read it. Some of it is questions. Says, Postville City Council members and officials. My name is Christine and Yarz, owner of Main Street Enterprises in Lockon, Postville, and Castalia. I own and manage fourteen units personally, and manage eight other units on top of that. Referencing the letter from the city titled Plans of Inspection, Article Six Complaints, refers, paragraph one refers to a housing official and the city contracted licensing housing inspector. Do we have them? Who are they? And where's the consistency? And I, side note, I do believe that plays into what Trevor was saying. Where's the consistency? Who's going to find them? Who's going to make sure that they're qualified? Back to the letter. In the letter from the city, Plans of Inspection, Article One, Introduction, paragraph one specifies all dwelling units, and then paragraph two specifies all rental units. Does the housing inspector's authority include enforcing the plans of inspection and co-violations, regulations, fees, penalties, et cetera, on privately owned dwelling units as well? For example, if there's a rental unit next to a privately owned unit, and the conditions of both are the same, broken windows, broken doors, project cars, cockroach infestations, garbage piled up outside, roof damage, public nuisance and noise violations, day and night. Does the housing official have the authority to use the ordinance of point oh three one B, inspection of all residential dwelling units? Point four two A, the housing official enforce any provisions on any buildings or any premises? Point oh four two B, no owner or occupant prevent the entry of a housing official? Point oh four, point three, inspections, all buildings, all structures subject to inspections? Point four, point oh four, point four, requirements not covered by code. Any requirement not covered by code but necessary for health, for safety, health, and general welfare of any dwelling shall be determined by the housing, housing official. Continuing on, the notice of violation, oh four point five. Whenever the city receives notice of complaint that any dwelling, dwelling unit or rooming unit fails to meet the requirements, the housing official issue notice to the owner, occupant, et cetera, that such failures must be corrected. Summarizing, it looks like all of this, she's questioning, does this apply to every dwelling, whether it's private or rental? It says, um, to some things, rental units are subject to forced compliance, citations, city attorney involvement, consecutive violations, publicly posted violation notices, prevention and occupancy, orders useful for lost, missing, vandalized, posted notices, citations, city attorney involvement, restrain, correct, remove, prevent work, prevent work as in improvements or things like that. Forced removal of completed construction, prevention of dwelling, citations or penalties, legal representation, legal representation to proceed at law against all citizens. Sharing that information with fire and police departments and giving them authority to investigate. On the other hand, the private housing is only if there is a complaint made against them for fines, regulations, penalties, and fees, and legal action. If that imbalance is the goal of this, this ordinance, then the goal cannot be the safety, health, and complaint housing within the whole community.
Excuse me, are you still reading her letter?
Yes, yeah, I'm almost done.
Because I have a question about what is point four one B and four C.
Oh, I, it is one fifty-five point oh four point five B, so it's one fifty-five, section four, part four, part B. I'm gonna use the first one I, I mentioned, so one fifty-five point oh three point one B, so, so it's point, point oh three, Plan of Inspection. It is.
Are you talking the current code or the changes? So you're talking about the current housing code or the changes to the code?
Which other one is posted on?
That would be the current housing code.
Okay.
So that's what we're adjusting.
Okay, so the questions are, is the adjusting applied to all rental units? Is it applied to rental units or dwelling units?
Rental units.
So it is specific to rental units?
To rental units, yes.
I see what you meant, so in that first paragraph, it says all dwelling units.
Well, and that goes back to back to her first question, it says, if there is a rental unit next to a private unit, and the conditions are the same, the only one that is going to get published in the city of Postville is going to be the rental.
What do you mean by publish?
Punish, sorry.
Oh, okay, so there's a different enforcement for private. So it depends on what it is. So it could be a dangerous building, it could be some sort of a nuisance. What they're talking about with this code is just rental properties and their inspections to them. So I think you're talking about two different things.
But there's a separate one for private.
Right, yeah, yeah. And we have a housing enforcer, we have a housing inspector.
Okay, so if I'm, if I'm allowed to reference the housing code, in there, where does it specify the private versus the rental? Because that's what
The housing code is for rental units, inspecting of rental.
Rental dwelling units, and the second part of introduction, number one. The two, two sentences. I know, the first sentence says of all dwelling units, but it's, it's all rental dwelling.
Yeah, yeah, because it does say all units, all dwelling units, which would be all private and
So if we can add rental units in that first paragraph.
Hey, Jess, can I, if I just help you? She's wondering if there's a spot in all of your ordinances. What's the section for private housing then? If you have one of those, that's, that way
Yeah, so we're only inspect, we're only getting involved in private homes if there's a nuisance that comes to our attention. So if you said broken windows, or you said a roof, that could be, all be under dangerous building. It, I don't know the code of, no, it's not chapter one fifty-five, I'd have to look here.
And then I do have a couple more questions about this new part. I'm gonna keep going while you're looking.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, it says, there's, as far as I understand, it says, there is a fee for the initial complaint and the initial inspection, and then for the initial reinspection, there's no fee, but if you have to come back and do a second reinspection, that would be the second reinspection fee.
Talking about when there's a complaint.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that
There is a complaint.
I'm understanding that right.
And, and if there's an inspection, seventy-five dollars, right? So that's what you, let's say the first complaint. The first, the initial funded complaint inspection is seventy-five dollars. And then if I have to go back and re-inspect it.
Okay, so, so the, the initial inspection establishes the validity of the complaint, is that correct? And then there is a re-inspection to make sure that it was taken care of? Is that, is that re-inspection?
Then that's a hundred dollars.
Okay, then the fees take place.
That's my understanding. And you might wanna wait for Darcy to get up, but she probably understands more than I do.
Yeah, so chapter one forty-five would be the dangerous building code. Chapter one forty-five? And what was the question about complaints?
So, um, Dorothy? So they, let's say that somebody, let's say I complained about Mary's property.
Correct.
It's gonna cost me seventy-five dollars to inspect it. And then if you go back and re-inspect and still not finished, then that's when the hundred dollars gets, yes. Okay, I will.
Okay, so it's, you get the, the initial fee covers the initial inspection and the re-inspection, but if you have to come back, that
Then this'll be a hundred dollars, then it could come another time, and that's
Okay, I'm gonna continue Christine's letter. If the Postville Housing Code regulations apply to private and rental units, I am in favor of all the changes. If the Postville Housing Code regulations apply primarily to the rental units, I have legal protest. I am in favor of making Postville better for everyone, but that has to apply to everyone, same across the board for expectations, requirements, and penalties. Thank you for your time, Christine and Yards.
Now, what is, is she a property owner?
Yeah, she has, she said, between Lockon, Postville, and Castalia, she has fourteen units herself, and she manages eight other units.
Where does she live?
She lives in Lockon.
One's the water dairy, that's the, right?
Yeah.
It's the one by the Presbyterian Church, that's red brick.
Oh, so I think she owns that. Yeah, she did.
She did, okay.
Okay, and then my question for me is, it says that they're going to be published, so the public will know every time, every landlord, every inspection, or is that, like, when will it be publicly published?
Oh, that's, yeah, it's in the public notice, it's crossed out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the comment, that's what we're, it's crossed out for us, that's what, that's one of the changes.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
Have you got an old sheet there?
I only have the screenshots that were printed off, and there's some that's crossed off, but I don't know if that was crossed off before I got it.
Yeah, well, probably, because that's, that's what, that's what these folks did, was, yeah, yeah.
And then the last one is, the certificate of inspected housing is to be issued to the property owner within how many days? That, I don't see anything in there.
It gets sent to the city. Gets issued to the city directly, not to the property owner. They just get a copy of it.
Okay, so if there's penalties that are accruing every day, how, within how many days will that be issued? I know. I apologize, I am reading what I was given.
Sure, sure.
What penalties are you talking about?
You're talking about what's gonna be published, right?
Okay, give me a second.
Can we, can we go on and we'll, uh?
Hi, I'm Julie Buttonberg with Norris and Stein with Community Action. We have, we're renting this here in town. Um, I think you did a really good job hitting all the points across the board. O'Wine, probably seven, eight years ago, for a similar transition as well, about doing inspections. Actually, when that started, there was a lot of the poorer quality landlords that sold off their properties, because they, they just had their losses there. So I mean, what you guys are going for is, is great, because the ultimate goal I'm getting is, you want peace and unsafe housing for people, right? Health and safety issues. When you're talking about complaints, you're, you're not talking about noise complaints or some of these grasses too long? Right, so complaints are health and safety. My roof's been leaking, I have mold in my house, I don't have hot water, those things. Um, when I did just this quick Google search, when I first got the letter about, you know, who, who in this area can provide these inspections? There was like four that popped up locally, and one is already retiring. And when I asked them, so hey, you know, what, what would this inspection run? And every single one of them was, well, how detailed do you want? So that comes down to the uniformity of it. You know, I work with section eight housing, so Upper Explorer Land, they come through and do inspections. And I believe that those are every three years. I know O'Wine is every three years as well. But with Upper Explorer Land, you know, they're, they're with, they're, they're for the health and safety things. They're not there to, I don't like my, my neighbor, those things. So they, they focus on that. You know, there are people who become hoarders, and that problem can escalate quickly as well. But I feel like every one of us has a different definition of clean. If I walk into my house and like overwhelmed, and I might just have a sink full of dishes, and that's it. If you walk in, into an apartment and the, the sink's empty, but there's, you know, toys everywhere, what's, what's your definition of clean? At the end of the day, it comes back to that health and safety and sanitary. Do they have a place that they can provide and prepare meals, sanitary, for that? So the uniform of the inspections is key, and every one of them has to see the sheets. So that would have been helpful too, to have, just to kind of see like what you guys are really looking for on that. And, and the cost of it too, I mean, that can vary greatly. He spoke of Decorah having the fire department come out and do that, that was a while ago.
That was in the beginning, when they were first trying to get it.
Yes, in the beginning, and now Greg Swans, and I believe, does that. And it's, you know, it's very uniform things. There are four more steps to the entrance, is there a handrail on it? Is that handrail loose? Is there a trip hazards, things like that, holes in the walls, lead paint, those things? Do the windows open? Are there screens in it? That is a difference. So I do affordable housing. Affordable housing, they don't really mind if there's not a screen in it. Section eight housing, it's gotta have a screen in it. So there's so many layers and variables to what health and safety is to be defined. Another resource might be, you know, if, if the city doesn't have the means to kind of keep this in-house, maybe outsourcing it with Upper Explorer Land? Because they have people that this is all they do, the inspect units. Might be a good, good option to look into as well. That's all I got.
Thanks, Julie.
I'd like to say something about what you just said. I think that if the people that are in section eight have the, I mean, if that's what they need, that's what everybody, I mean, why should they be? I mean, I mean, if section eight says that you have to have screens on the windows, or if you're a certain type of cleanliness, or un, disre, undisrepaired, again, I'm trying to say if that's a word, but, I mean, you should do the best, not and not sugarcoated, you know.
Hey, back here on Row, windows are designed to have screens.
Pardon me?
Not all windows are designed to have screens.
Really?
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, yes. To answer that question. So for years, we didn't accept section eight housing. Because, I mean, we'd actually never did. Partially because, wasn't because, um, how was the best way to put it? So screens, right? So
That was just kind of
No, 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 it's a good, no, no, screens is an excellent example. No, no, I love it, that's a great one to work. Because you can put screens as a landlord. Every screen is an every Kind of opens up the window, pushes the screen out. Why do you think they get broken? It's not because I broke it, because they broke. Goes back, goes back to smoke alarms, which is another, we've all talked about that ten years ago. When we go into it, we always think, we had a, I know, we had a good reputation.
You mean our check sheet, like Dave uses?
We always make sure
Yeah.
But I could go back in a week later, and either the battery's wrong
Yeah, I don't have one with me out here, but
So you gotta watch some of that stuff, and then, and then cleanliness goes back to your tenant.
Well, that's true.
So if you walk through the front door, and the, and the stove that was brand new doesn't work two months from now, because they, they boiled water in it all day long and burnt out an element, doesn't mean I, I can't fix it, but at the same time, section eight forced me to fix it at my cost. I was able to go in and say, this is, we, we, as a landlord, we have move-in sheets. The landlords do, this is everything, everything works, you sign off on it, they know it all works. So then when a burner doesn't work anymore, I can go in and say to the tenant, we're gonna fix that, this is gonna cost you sixty-five bucks. Because it's thirty-five dollars, or who knows in the last five years, it's probably sixty-five bucks for the element now, and you still gotta pay, gotta go in and put the thing in. So, I wouldn't use section eight as the best example, because they're, yeah, they get a little bit outside the, the real house of
But no, the, 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 the Upper Explorer Land that does all the section eights?
Well, and, and this, this goes back where the best one, I, I love what you said, too, it goes back to where the best, the best one is for the city itself to come up with what you guys wanna see, and then have somebody implement that. And some of that can be discussed with landlords, a little bit on the, on the, on the screens, or on some of that, because again, section eight housing entirely different standard. And their expectation is that all tenants are gonna take care of everything, it's a landlord's fault that they don't, and that's just not the real world. So that's, I just, I just had to get up there on it.
Davis, when you do housing inspections, do you have a list of some, like a federal list, or state list? State list, okay. So we would have that, it's like
So we're gonna have to fence actually, a little bit. It's okay, it's okay. You have to keep in mind, I know we're getting a little off subject here, but you gotta keep in mind, with section eight housing, you, you sign a lease with them, you sign a lease with section, you're right, with section eight. They're coming in there because their goal is to make sure that that place is safe and ready. As a landlord, and this goes for all landlords, have nothing to do with the city, as a landlord, you sign a, you write a lease, you sign a lease with your tenant, you are also responsible for the maintenance of that property and inspections, and not, and not waiting for these. Now, section eight just doesn't drop in like the milk inspector does. They give you a letter saying, hey, we're gonna inspect this, that is your cue to go in and like, what's going on here? A burnt out burner?
But they also don't cover tenant damage.
Right, but that comes back to you as a, as a landlord versus the tenant. One, I mean, I don't try to pick fights, I can't win, I can't prove that you boil oil the water on this for seventeen hours, I can't prove that. So what do we do? We cut your losses, you're a landlord, you gotta fix things, it's your property, you need to keep it rolling.
There's a better example, right? They drop the toothbrush down the toilet, you can't get it out.
Hey, that's in my lease, if you plug that toilet, and I gotta call somebody to fix it, that charge is coming back on you. Turns down to how your lease is written.
Right.
So you add those things in. It's pretty hard to, to prove some of these things, but if it's, hey, the, the toilet's backed up, barber spool doesn't work, because there's full of kitty litter, then there
But I don't get to go after
That doesn't work.
I don't get to go after section eight, when they destroy the property.
Put section eight and destroy your tenant.
Yes, the tenant you're paying the, the rent for.
I'm not But my next question I want to ask was, um, the, the database, with the information that you guys are gathering, who the landlords are in this town, are you gonna put that together as like a landlord list, a resource list, so when it's easier for people to come in here and be like, hey, I'm looking to move to Postville, need a place to live, you point me in the right direction. Is that your goal as well? No?
We'll, we'll have all that information.
Right, and will it be public?
I don't know.
I don't know, we haven't talked about it.
There's a huge need for that. Because when people are moving into a new city, they don't know where to start, and most rentals are portmanteaus.
Gotcha, okay.
It'd be, you know, be kind of a nice thing to maybe ask the landlords in the room if that's something they're interested in as well. You know, some don't want to be advertised, because then they can't say yes or no, they're kind of stuck.
They're kind of stuck.
But I think, so like when it comes to like the smoke alarms and stuff like that too, so there's a new, new, it's a new, they call it INSPIRE. INSPIRE is the new inspection standard. I would suggest looking into that and INSPIRE. But, so like you have to have ten-year tamper-proof smoke alarms now. So no more, you change the battery. Hardwired is hardwired. That's always, always best. You have to have, if it's not hardware, you have to have that ten-year tamper-proof. The other thing too.
Is that the ten-year tamper-proof battery operated then or what?
Yep, because they don't make it tamper-proof ten-year when you plug into. So your, your battery or your hardwires are always gonna have a battery backup. You're gonna need to check that. But if hardware doesn't exist, then you have to have the ten-year tamper-proof. It, it is a nice investment because, I mean, again, it comes back to your lease. That smoke alarm's gone, I know what was in there, that's the tenant's charge then. But ultimately, as a landlord, we are responsible. So that's just kind of the price you pay with, with having rentals. And it's an unfortunate price.
I've paid a lot of prices.
But it is, it is what it, what it is. And again, that, to that timeframe, the two years, I think two years is, is pretty tight. I think you'd be better off to stretch that out. Because again, you're looking for the health and safety things. And so, so the, the big stop, but. Is it, yeah, there's no ones three two, so.
Okay, thanks.
Julie?
I didn't find where it said daily. Can I ask on, on the cross out?
You wanna come up again, please?
On the cross out one. If I'm looking at one fifty-five point oh three. Section one fifty-five dot oh three. Okay, so number one is not crossed out, but A, B, and number two are. So then my question is, if I go back to one fifty-five point oh two, same thing. One is not crossed out, section one fifty-five point oh two. One is not crossed out, two is not crossed out, A.
And what is the section that one fifty-five, you said oh two? Okay, I see.
Okay, so one is not crossed out, two is not, A, B, C, and D are. And F is, but then on your current code, you have F and G, where they're not crossed out, but they're not on here. Are they still implemented or are they just?
No, they're crossed out, they're gone.
Right, this is the current name.
So F and G stay then. They're not crossed out, so it's late payments if you're late twenty-five bucks. So that would stay in their code. And G would stay that you have the right to appeal. So those are not changing in the current code. These other stuffs are being changed. So she's trying to compare the current to the changes.
Exactly, exactly. And so she's wondering though.
Right, so in the current code, F and G would stay.
It would stay, yep. It talks about the penalty and it talks about the right to appeal. Yep, those would stay in the code.
It's in there, but it's not number G. But see, what you have here, what we have is all the changes.
Yeah, they got the changes.
Yep, and I think that's what the, the screen checks were. So on things that have not been changed, that is where that daily fee comes in. It's on section one fifty-five point oh five. Penalties and corrective actions.
Yep.
It's part two.
Okay, each day a violation?
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I believe.
Yep, so that would stay. If it's not crossed out in the change one, it would stay.
So that would be the, the daily violation fees. So I think that's what she was referring to on the.
But then that would accrue once the housing inspector returns that, that certificate. It wouldn't be like until we could.
Right, yeah.
So it's when the certificate gets returned, not in.
Once the student sees that there's violations, from that point on is when you start to.
I will let her know.
All right, anybody else?
Hello, I'm Christina Drews. Just have one apartment. So I don't have too many comments, but one that Trevor did echo is, I am concerned about finding a housing inspector. I did look on the Iowa Society of Home Inspectors and there was only one person listed for this area. So I think it is a little concerning. I did talk to somebody last week, like from Sumner that had someone inspect their home. And they were charged eight hundred dollars. So, one, I think it would be good to see, you know, the list that you have. And be able to somehow either give a list or have a person or maybe be able to, a bunch of us could get together and hire somebody and maybe it wouldn't have as much of a trip charge. But it was just concerning not being able to find, you know, responsible people and are we gonna, you know, all have the same inspection? One comment, I think that was brought up, you know, on section eight. There, I did have a, a time where I was gonna have a person come into the apartment and for being just only having one apartment, the cost and the changes that I had to do, I chose not to do it. So I'm not sure that, I mean, and some of the items in the list were extremely picky. So I feel that if all apartments were to that code, that 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 cost would definitely be passed on to the renter. I'm not sure, but you're to that level of what you wanna do. So just an idea. I mean, my main concern is the inspector. I was just really.
And when I was saying, well, section eight was bad because, you know, that, I had never seen one.
Right, exactly, exactly. Anyway, thank you for your time.
She said she found them online, so yeah, they're.
Anyone else?
Yeah, but she's saying in this area. Which, yeah, there wasn't that many in this area. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Kermit Miller. I'm probably one of the oldest landlords here. Thank you people for serving on the council, because it's something I don't wanna do. But I've kind of, one of my questions is, where did this interest in the inspections come from? What are we trying to accomplish? Is there complaints that we're trying to address? I understand that, and you know, through, we've rented property for a long time, don't have that much now. But like Trevor and some of these people addressed is the high maintenance tenants that we have in Postville. We talk about screens. We actually take the screens out because they won't last. We have doors that flop in the wind that, in back in the years, I took that storm door off because they never closed it. And as we go along, we talk about safety, that's the biggest thing, proper wiring, all of that, that has always been a concern and one of the things we strive to, to make sure was right. At the same token, you come back, you know, like Trevor said, they're hard on things. We've lived in our house almost, you know, thirty-five some years. We replaced, what, the last carpet here, few years. Yet in the rental properties, we replaced flooring over and over and over. Within ninety days, sometimes we struggled to find flooring that stand up. We've used every type of flooring, from porcelain to linoleum, whatever, watching pull their couch out the door, leave two tracks, linoleum cup. You know, we've had squatters that get in there, can't get them out. We've had three fires. Some we caught before the fire department had to come. All that is very frustrating. The smoke alarms get taken, the batteries get taken, light bulbs are gone. It's, it's a tough job being the landlord in Postville. And so as we come back, I look at the fees and some of the first things to think about is cost. Are we gonna pass this along? I mean, rents are already, I hear that we're one of the cheapest landlords in town, because we're hearing, you know, higher rents. And yet our tenants seem to struggle making those payments. Yes, we can pass on, like you do, but we haven't really done that. We've seen, you know, brand new stoves ruined within a couple of years. It's pretty hard going to a tenant that's barely making payments and say, look, you owe us five, six, seven, eight hundred bucks for a stove. So those are the things that I'm concerned with. And as we bring on more fees, what do we do as landlords? Are we gonna pass them along? Re-inspection, we talk about home inspection at eight hundred bucks and big old crap. I did like the idea, and I don't remember who brought it up, but the fire department, if you say, in Decora. And looking for uniformity, perhaps we can use some of these fees to go to the fire department and have a local inspector. That maybe understands our community better.
I, I don't think that that, the annual fee is that high, fifty dollars.
It isn't, but then you come back and add the inspection to it. When I looked at the forty bucks in annual inspections, that isn't bad, what you're charging. It's like the home, home inspector comes in and he wants three, four, five hundred bucks. Who writes that job?
That's the difference between a home inspector and a health and safety inspector.
I didn't hear that.
There's a difference, like the home inspector versus the health and safety inspector.
Right. But what you're talking about is what your title is, what is the charge gonna be and how is it compared to the order? If we're trying to do affordable housing, maybe we should look at incentives to try to get more housing. I think the, the housing post was tightened up, our rents have gone up. Cost repairs certainly skyrocketing. So I'd like to see maybe a broader view. More input from the landlords as a whole, not so much bureaucracy from the people that get paid for enforcing this stuff. But I'd like to see our tenants or landlords get together with you, you know, and maybe brainstorm a little bit. If you can't come up with a way to meet your, you know, complaints, hopefully be able to solve those problems. When I talk to my son, both of them, and one of the things we came up with, he said, okay, and I'm, and I agree with this. So we're addressing one size contract, right, the landlord. But there's two sides. There's the tenant. So does the tenant get inspected? Does he own a mop and a broom? Does he know how to use them? Does he know how to clean a stove? Does he know how to take care of pests? Here's one for you, we have cockroach problem, a year and a half is over. We called Orkin, Orkin comes in, you gotta have a six-month program with them. Fifty-five bucks a month. End of six months, we had a worse problem than when we started. So where do we go? Back to doing our own.
As far, as far as having the landlords, having the tenants having inspection, that's, I think, the landlord's part to have their background checked and ask, you know, find out where they're.
That sounds really good. But what do you do when you talk to the guy and he doesn't speak English or he throws three forms of ID on the table and says, well, who do you want to be today? I mean, I've been through this. So I've said, who, who do you rent to? And I said, Ben Franklin. He's got the money. Sad, but that's the way it is. You know, three units. Uh, one, we're having cockroach problem. She's not a good housekeeper. But she's a single mother with three kids. We lowered her rent trying to keep her there. And the house is getting, you know, screens, kids, or the flooring.
I, I have a question to do. And this could be to all those people that are landlords. Do you guys have a, in your contract where you can, you know, give them twenty-four hours to come and do a self-inspection? Cause I was a landlord at one time in another state and I did that. And I, I went in there and I said, you gotta start taking out the.
Well, you do that. I mean, when you go to collect the rent, you know, we try to get after them.
Conviction is today.
A lot of times we hear, if there's damage, whatever, this is the famous one to go out and onto, this is what, me pay, me move. You know? So. And you really can't force them to live with you. But I am a firm believer in capitalism, and I think if you don't keep your stuff up, they can go rent from somebody else. They're not assigned to us, they don't have to live on our property. So it's really up to us to make our property safe and serviceable. And I think the less government intervention.
I think there's a lot of the risks you were talking about, like people stealing the batteries or whatever. That's, that's in the nature of the relationship. Even in big cities where they do have regulations and where they do have laws, you always get renters who don't.
We understand that, I mean, I.
But I think also as you, as you improve the, the standard of the living or the, or the property and it's well-maintained, you also attract more reliable renters as well.
I think I'm gonna say something on that. You fix it out nicely, when they're ninety, ninety days later, his place is trashed.
That's a risk, I mean, that can happen if you're in any.
Cause you can't get rid of a cockroach in thirty days.
Well, but also the process and the complaint processes is designed to be responded to promptly. So if you're only having to do an inspection as it stands, let's say every two years, let's say we change it to every three years. That's not a big investment or a fee every three years. So if somebody needs your apartment or.
You're not talking about the fee. That is nothing.
I'm saying.
It's the time. It's all that goes with it, to provide safer and sanitary housing. It's key by now for the pass. That's what I'm saying.
Right, and.
I'm not hiring about your forty dollars or twenty bucks, but I don't want somebody coming in and saying, hey, you had missed the inspection because we didn't fill the box. And then you're gonna re-inspect me and check me even more. And I don't, you know, if you're gonna license a landlord, why don't we license every property owner? Make sure they all keep their properties up. That's kind of where I feel. Whether I'm right or wrong, but at least you've heard my side. It's a story of forty some years of renting property. Everybody thinks being a landlord is great.
I sold all mine out, yeah.
It's tough, it is a tough, tough, it's ownership different than rental. You know, you're renting, you're, 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 you're super, you're looking out for, in a way, you're looking out for providing a home. How you live is your choice.
Do you, do you renter or landlords, do you guys typically get like a month or two money upfront?
You try. We have one gal now, she, well, we have the immigration thing going on, so I've had two guys leave. So I have two single mothers. We've reduced the rent. Fortunately, I can afford it. But if I had just bought a property and was trying to rent a newer place.
Yeah, cause I, every place I've ever rented in all my life, I've always had to have one month's rent, at least one month of security deposit.
Here's a good one.
When they move out, I mean, these.
Traditional. Eight hundred dollar rent, eight hundred dollar security deposit, eight hundred dollar stove.
That's what I'm saying.
Eight hundred dollar front door, eight hundred dollars worth of carpet, that, that deposit doesn't go. It's, it's just realization, we're, we're all, we all do it for something, no, but, but it's a realization that, that you should know that you can't solve that, there's not enough you can charge a tenant in order to cover the losses. That's, that's what I'm saying. And, and it's a business. It's not that, it's not that we're not willing to take the losses, that's why we did it, right? But at the same time, it's the, why don't everybody realize we're, we're fighting to keep our properties good so that someday I can either make money or sell a property or do something like that. So we're all trying to take care of it. But some of the ownership of making places safe needs to go back on the tenant a little bit too. So, so some of that can be, if you want, you implement, we take pictures of everything, we used to. We took pictures of everything before somebody moved in. And then when, then if you came to me and said, oh, two months later, look at this place, I said, huh, this would look like when they rented it.
What do you want? Give it the last two months rent. Cause they know when they're leaving.
Yeah, that's the other one.
And taking a difference.
But even if it's ownership, I saw the new, you know, when we had the new houses up there? And after the raid, we got the houses back. But I had one gentleman, I helped him get into the house. He comes to me in November, after I think three. He comes to me in November, after, I think, three, well, let's see. Anyway, he's in there for two, four years. Good guy, good family. He quits paying me in November. Well, what's, what's going on, Ricky? I'm going home. What do you mean you're going home? Long time. So while that is providing a, a low cost home for him, he was sending money back to Mexico, build a house and furnished it, leaves with two four-wheel drive trucks, brand new. It's six me, during November, December, January and February, when he leaves. So it's not all fun.
No, we, that's right.
Can't lock the doors.
Thanks for.
Yes, yes. I mean, she can't lock the doors anymore. Yeah. That's. You're out today.
Hi, thank you for all those people that sitting here, all the people that tend to hear what we have to say. My name is Vivas and many people here know me. When I'm looking around, I think I know ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine of the people sitting here. And I love everybody equal, but we each one have different thought and different way we looking. Um, it's very interesting, but Trevor, Christina, Mr. Miller. Um, she, you look, you look like a sister, is it sister or something? Your mom, Christine, they call her almost everything what came to my head. I just want to share with you and show the story happened today. I went, I ate dinner with my family. And as I'm eating dinner, I got a WhatsApp from one of my tenant. She told me the oven not working good. I finished dinner, I'm going to the, it's look like a story to tell her tonight. You know, nobody said, share the story. I'm going there and she's showing me the, I think it's called drop pen under the oven, you know, and the way you're cooking is like broken. She told me it's dangerous because you know that thingy when you cook on it can fall in. So I told her, well, this oven was new when you moved here like a year ago. And you complained about it a few months ago and I told you that you broke it. And actually I sent her a link, it's fifteen dollars one, four new ones, those like metals, just fix it. She said, okay, I will buy a new one. As I walk in, I noticed that the couch used to be on the left side, now the couch move more inside of the house. And I saw a hole in the wall. And I finished there, the lady showing me, she said, that, um, smoke detector is not working. She telling me. So I'm trying to push the button, you know, to see if it's working, what she's telling me, just happened two hours ago. She said, no, 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 don't try, it's not working, don't fix it, I like it like that. Because if not, when I'm cooking, I don't want every day the fire coming to my house. Because it's gonna make a lot of noise when I'm cooking. And I know the seven o'clock, I have to come into this meeting. And part of the problem is the smoke detector. Trevor said that everybody, they take the batteries, they take it out, et cetera. I said, okay, let me think. I'm going out, she stopped me, she said, hey, the carpet, I wanted to put a new carpet because it's tarred. So I say, last time I was here, two, three, two, three weeks ago, the couch was here, so maybe when you move the couch, you tear it? She said, yeah, she said, yeah, it's terrible when I move the couch. But again, this is just one of the stories that happened today. I just looked something here, it say, in general, after all what everybody say, say housing inspection requirement, process and support for landlord, for landlord. So far, all of that paper is talking about support for the tenants. And I think in short, it's not, we all care about the tenants, we all want them to live good, to live safe. You know, nobody has something against them. Even when they sometime hurt us, big time, Mr. Miller just say. And Trevor Ed, to fix a door, to fix, I mean, her husband, electrician. You selling, you used to sell stuff. I don't know what everybody doing, but you, you make a cement a few months ago in your property. Each one have something in his house that he, I have a professional. You know the prices. And you live there for many years, you know how much most of the people charge for it. It's not a secret for you, we are not in Chicago, not in New York City. We're not talking about thousands of dollars. And Trevor Ed, he used to charge first month, last month and a month's deposit. I promise you that fifty, sixty percent of the, of the landlord, maybe more, not do it. You just talk about a few months ago. I charge first month, last month. So that lady complained about the carpet, I told her, not carpet, uh, aluminum. I told her I'm not going to fix it, to be honest with you. Like he said, I'm going, uh, Miller said, I'm going to fix it. Tomorrow, she's gonna move the table there. Right? And that day when the inspection gonna come, so you're gonna see it's there. I'm gonna prove him, I just wasn't in hours, I paid six hundred dollars for my carpet, the inspector in March. X. So, uh, fix it, right? So basically, I have a feeling that all of you, especially I'm talking to the people who sit here. You're all good guys. But I don't know if any of you have a house or, or a company that you have some rent that, that you have this experience, what we have. I suggest, I don't know exactly if this took effect or not already, those changes, I suggest. I don't know if you push it sixty, ninety days, everything, try to have a, a comedy, not comedy, wherever, like, some of you guys, and weekend, wherever, all the landlord need to get together, choose two or three people, sit together, see what the city wants, like I don't remember who is the one that said to have a list, what the city wants, not what the state inspector and all of those want. It can be one, two, one, two, I'm just saying names. And come together with something that is for landlord, for the tenants, for the city of, for the, for the people of possibly, for the city council, everybody gonna be happy. Not just like say it, and say this will be decided because this was the lawyer of the city, uh, uh, prepared and legally is okay and we can do it. Deal with it, good luck. We, the bottom line is, we live in a small town. And we're still doing small town business, right or wrong. So I think we have to do something together instead of just say it, this is what we decide. We hear you, thank you so much, but this was gonna happen. Thank you for listening.
Next.
I'm Leslie White, I've got seven units, but I got one close to. And as far as the talking to the town, that in this union, someone can call the city, who are the landlords who are all over the town? And that works pretty well. And then they can down the list. But as far as all these things that you've heard, that's the way it is. Landlord, there's, there's some renters out there that just work to take advantage of a landlord. And I think that it's an excellent thing to have, uh, a time that the council people meet with landlords to come up with what's reasonable and, and have it reasonable for both sides and the, cause I, I try to fix them up as a place that I would live in. Okay? And then somebody moves in, some of them, they're great. But there's an awful lot of them, I could, I've done it a few years and I can tell a lot of stories. And, and there needs to be, I'm just saying that you need to do something reasonable for everyone. Because it's too easy to make a list and say, this, 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 and they penalize and have these inspections and, and throw all that at the landlord, that's, that's gonna be a heavy weight. And I just don't think that's really fair either. So just saying be reasonable.
All right, anybody else?
Boris.
Thanks for your question. I've lived here for over thirty-five years, I've seen our community change very much. I think, um, a big issue we're dealing with, which everybody's been talking about, is that people, we have a very big melting pot here. People are coming from very different lifestyles, different backgrounds, very different levels of cleanliness and, you know, self-care and all that stuff. I've been in education for many years, same strong. And I think maybe just adapting something along those lines, doing something incentive, instead of just, okay, these are the, you know, these are the fees, this is what we have to do. But maybe some kind of incentive, um, motivated, if we're looking for safety, it's not like, you know, if this is like trying to raise funds or something, you know, taxes, maybe that's one thing. But if we're just looking at, you know, safety and getting, you know, things up to par, maybe incentives for the landlords, incentives for the tenants. And then the other thing, so, I mean, that would be something that would have to be fleshed out, it's just something I was thinking about, but the other thing I would say is maybe in the school itself, there needs to be some kind of collaboration here. I know we had this, because of the miniature school, we had also a lot of kids from different backgrounds and different, you know, sometimes some families are a little less functional and you have where, you know, children need to be taught. So maybe we can't change the parents or the grandparents who've already been, you know, are adults and they have it ingrained a certain way. But on the kids, they can be taught. And just ha- having very simple, besides math and English and gym, you know, and all that stuff. Children need to be taught how to, you know, maintenance, and I know the fire department, I'm sure they have, you know, they learn those kind of basic rules, but that having working, you know, um, fire, you know, things in the house, is that that's important. So the kids come home, they see the parent, you know, knocking it with a broom to get it, you know, to stop. And the, and the child says, no, no, that's important, I learned that, you know, at the fire department and that makes, you know, you can come to this from a different angle. That's, you know, I'm just saying, maybe some of these things we need to have the kids come home and bring it home to the parents. And hopefully in fifteen, twenty years, it will have, you know, a cleaner, uh, or better postal.
Thank you.
But. I'm still looking at pictures because I can't really explain what, uh, what kind of jewels that. On Reggie Luke, I, uh, got a good story. But, uh, I can't find the photos, but when a tenant leaves and they, they've shot three holes in the back door and flushed a bag of concrete down the toilet. So who, you know, that, and that, anybody can experience that of a real landlord. And, yeah. We've got enough expenses already. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? How's the time?
So, listening to all these instructive stories. I wonder if there's a way that we can vet the tenants. Maybe they, maybe they do their, get a, some kind of license to actually be able to rent property. Then the landlords would know that they're actually. Yeah. Whatever. Either they need clean classes or something, some of them might need that. But, um, I could tell you all kinds of stories. I've, I've, I've had a lot of heartbreaks for a lot of years. And the way some people live, you, you wouldn't believe it. PCs and. Anyway, so that's just an idea.
Yeah. We got one, we got one coming here.
At the end of the day, landlords and tenants, we're gonna have stories. I manage rentals in seven counties. I can write books, just like all these people here too. But what it comes down to is education, not only for the tenant, but for the landlord. And somebody asked me, can you be good people in the winter? You guys willing to do that?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, you can. Um, the moratorium, that is for your heats, your electric companies. You, you as the landlord have the power to hold these people to their leases. And you have the option to look at what the city is trying to do as them at your back, helping you. Um, so it's a matter of, of how you're looking at things. Um, the other thing is, yes, the eviction process is awful and it's long and expensive. But a lot of people don't realize that a lease termination and an eviction, two different things. You can send a thirty day notice to terminate. And, and if the lease isn't coming for you, you don't even have to even answer some of them. Like, it's always good to do it for a good cause. Um, and I hear, you know, some landlords, why lower the rent to help them out? Cause you're a good person. Like, that's, that's good, but that's your choice to do that. So again, the landlords and tenants, they all need education, everybody needs education. And just look at what the city is trying to do in a different lens, that they're trying to help you as a landlord, not hurt you.
All right, Trevor.
Yeah, one last one here.
Oh, yeah, right.
So, well, we're, we're back and forth. Um, so I really wish for multiple reasons that my wife was still here. She, for many, many years, ran a very tight ship with all the units we had. Very good landlord, knew the ins and outs, she could convict you in less than forty-five days. If you know what you're doing and you gotta go to court. And she knew all the ins and outs and how everything worked. One thing she always said, where a landlord list would be a bad idea, was if more of the landlords talked to each other, we could get rid of a lot of the trash and post, a lot of the bad tenants. And that was something she strived for all the time, worked with the police department, worked with everybody to try to make that actually happen. Cause better tenants all around are good for everybody. Good for towns, good for landlords, everybody prospers if we get the crap out of time, right? Part of that comes back to, again, landlords knowing who each other are, talking to each other. Call and say, hey, I got Billy Swanson wants to rent from me. Yeah, no one, is he any good? Should I not, should I get rid of him? The other one where a lot of landlords have fallen down is actually take them to court. Actually sue the tenant. When they leave you and they leave you for four hundred dollars in the rears, or there's a thousand dollars worth of repairs that you know you are never gonna get money for, ever. We never got any money. People destroyed stuff and no one ever paid, no way to make them pay. Either you're not legal, just whatever, or your credit score's at two hundred already and you just don't give a damn. So for all kinds of reasons, no one pays. And then, then when you file to get garnishment of wages, they just quit their job and get a new one. And then the state of Iowa, you gotta refile, find out where they're working and refile at the new place. It doesn't just follow them around, you gotta follow them around. So for all the landlords, if you, the list is a good thing. All talk to each other, change other's names, numbers, call, call each other. Call you when you have a bad tenant. Seriously, call everybody when you have a bad tenant, tell them, hey, this guy don't rent, so. Cause the best way to police ourselves is to police our. You know?
Um, so a bad tenant is somebody who moves into a new house and doesn't realize they're treating cockroaches, something to bad person. Or does not keep.
No, it's a bad tenant, not a bad person, that's two different things.
Happens to be very nice people, they just.
Right.
Where they come from, they don't, they don't clean the, the right way. And they're willing to live with a few cockroaches. They don't realize, no, 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 they live with that.
But.
And.
But that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
Uh, we have a.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
We took stuff out.
I'm saying get it locked in your house.
Brand new, brand new, fully all went to look at it and he came and told me that this cockroach is all of a sudden. And we went to, we speak to him, the person says, I don't know.
Pest, pest control is pest control, we spent our whole life chasing pest control. Buildings and everything. When I'm, when I'm, when I'm talking about bad tenant, I'm talking about the guy that kicked your front door in, tore up your carpet, destroyed your stove. That's a bad tenant, that's the guy you need to call your, your other person for. And that's the person you need to take to court and sue, whether they find you or not. Because the one thing that happens when you take them in and you, you take them to court, it goes into Iowa courts online. And that was my wife's favorite way to find out whether you were rent to or not. You can type in any tenant that comes to you, in Iowa courts online, doesn't cost you a dime. And you'll find out their convictions for whatever. You don't want a pedophile, you don't want drug offenders, you don't want that, it's fine, they're right there, it'll tell you. It'll also tell you the last landlord sued. So some of it goes back to, and again, I want it all the good here. And, and if we all, if all the landlords work together in the city, works with the landlords a little bit too, and realizes that it is a special community. And I will tell you, the majority of landlords here actually do give a crap about having a nice property. They, 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 they wanna provide a good product. These are customers, not somebody you're doing a favor for, they're paying you. At the same time, you kind of have expectations as to how they're gonna take care of your property. That's all I guess. Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment as far as taking people to court. I had a gal that got in. And sometimes what we find is, you know, we, we went to one person, they move out and everybody was there. Or a friend moves in and all of a sudden you've got a whole new tenant that you didn't even rent. So your contract and all that is like, who is, you know? But in taking them to court, our experience has been, we got.
But in taking them to court, our experience has been, we got nothing. If we did win, here maybe two or three times, restitution, you got twenty bucks maybe. One of our worst ones, the gal got in there for seven months, four trips to court. We finally won. Only reason we had her out was the house got on fire. We smoked her on, on the bench. But that kind of just comes back to inspection. Maybe somebody should have taught the tenant downstairs, ten, you can't plug that heater. The space heater. And a dehumidifier in the same oven. Overloaded the oven. But in that, you know, it's seven months, four trips to court. We did get a gentleman for six thousand dollars. And to date, after maybe four or five years, we got a total of eight hundred bucks. And as far as going to court, it's, it's time consuming and typically they're gone.
It's, it's, but it's, but it's for the next guy. It's for when I, when she comes to rent for me, I look her up and I say, she screwed you. If we all do it, then, um, that person that that's you, I can see it. Once someone does it to me, you can see what they did. So it's not, it never, you're never gonna get, we all know, you're never getting their money.
That originally.
Yes.
Like most things. Sorry, but I also wanna say, it's looking like nobody now, after the story, nobody just last thing to say. I just recalled, I followed the meeting, I'm not following all of them, but as a good citizen, I follow it later on. Sometime I called Darcy, why it's not yet? Online, you know, it's already like one week. So anyway, so if I'm, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. Is a person came here, I don't know, two, three months ago and complained, he was crazy or something like that. And he complained with some, uh, I don't know, landlord, I don't remember every word, but. That he complained that some landlord neglected the, the housing and people afraid to complain, something like that. That basically, to my best understand, how everything started. And Mrs. M R brought up to the city, what about coding? So Darcy said that we have something, but we only enforce it for. New, or if somebody complains, so the broad idea to make all of these changes, what we actually coming. To this meeting today. So honestly. I, I just have a feeling that even if everybody here, they're not gonna say what I said, they're just gonna say, Darcy. Or the city council member, the chief police, the mayor, you're hundred percent right. Do it, do the inspector, we pay five thousand dollar, you're hundred percent right. I still don't understand. How this is gonna stop from the bad landlord, cause I don't think none of those people here are bad landlords. I don't think any of them. I don't think how it's gonna stop the bad landlord. Maybe, maybe it is some of them others, I don't know, or they're not here, maybe. Because if you have this inspection, people talk about every two years, every three years. Fine. They come, the house, the inspector came, the house was fast beautiful. If the landlord sell. He's a bad person, two weeks later, the hot water broke down. The guy calling, oh, I come in next week. Yeah, I forgot my wife have to go to America, I come next week. Oh, I ordered a part, the part only gonna come Monday. Oh, it's a short, it's a, it's gonna come Tuesday. So this guy can still play. And if somebody say, oh, I have mold in the shower, the, the roof is leaking. The bad landlord, he passed the inspection, he have two years to play. So after five months, the guy that's afraid to complain. Will finally got the guts and say, you know what, the landlord play with me, not even actually going to fix the hot water. Or the mold in the house, or the roof that's leaking, wherever it is. So where actually with that, what you're trying to enforce, where is actually help those people? If we have a bad landlord, nothing gonna help. You have to have the people actually complain. But it's nothing good because what we're doing now, they have to come complain and I don't know if it's a police issue, if it's a city issue. And I'm sure that basically like a one rotten apple can make the whole bag sting. I don't feel that it's something we all have to go through it, because maybe, maybe it's the one rotten apple. I don't even wanna go to that, but maybe. I don't believe that what we're doing now. This meeting are actually gonna fix the core of the issue and we're actually here because that guy that came to complain, that is that some people afraid to complain. And please, I'm asking each one, Mrs. Rebecca, Mary, Lori, the mayor, Darcy, Matt, Devora and Larry, think about what I just said. How what we doing now, or what the city tried to say, to do, actually will fix that issue that came here two, three months ago. With the guy says that some people complain to, afraid to complain. It's all gonna happen. Thank you.
At the, at the end of the day, we have to start somewhere. It's not gonna solve it within one month, two months, even if it's two years. But for, for a society and for community to function successfully. Every area of that community has to be held accountable. We have homeowners who are held accountable. We have car owners have to be held accountable, pet owners have to be held accountable. You landlords provide a very huge critical service to our community, huge. Say, I mean, I think seventy-five percent was one estimate of, of the houses and households on rentals. So you're providing a very important service to the people in our community. But it can't go unchecked and, and just, um, self-checked and unaccounted for. Every area, every person in the community has to be held accountable. So when you say, and you know, if the, why of the renters that you have accountable, it's like when you own a business. And you go into a pizza store or whatever it is. And so you're not always gonna get good customers, right? When you provide a service. You might have someone who walks out without paying, you might have people who complain all the time. That's, that's a separate issue. But the goal of this is to maintain a safe public health and safety. And for landlords who are, there's a huge amount of you. For, for us to work collaboratively. To, to maintain health, public health and safety. It's a, you provide a very important service to our community, but it has to be held accountable. It can't be that only landlords are not held accountable. Everybody has to be held accountable. So, and I mean, in here as far as like, if the guy's gonna start making excuses, why not to come and fix it? We have over here within a reasonable amount of time. When the person makes a complaint, but as you pass an inspection, it's also going to protect you guys from unfounded complaints. People are not gonna be so quick to make complaints for little things that. That aren't that important, especially if they know that they have to pay for the inspection when it's found or unfounded.
Finish? What do you say? You're hundred percent right. It's not that, everybody know it. I kind of feel that it was like only to say, we all agree to it, we all know it. Same like you go to the, to the, to Wakani, you pay registration for the car, you pay a taxes for the house, this stuff that, you know, we live on society. We, we have to do it, is obviously. But I'm gonna go back to my core of, of, of the thing what I just said now when I came the last time. How that inspection, now that we force us to do it, gonna help if somebody gonna afraid to complain? Because if they was afraid before, what's gonna make him not to be afraid now? We're talking about. Some people that are afraid and some maybe rotten apple. What you're talking about in general is like, you can ask the chief of police, we have the sticker on the back of the car, we pay the registration. This count like you, I guess, like we count the, whatever the word you say in English, that our car paid another taxes, the registration. He not stopping everybody, even if you have the sticker every six months, even if you have the sticker, let's say if you actually pay the thing. I make a traffic valuation, you can ask me license, registration, so. Like Darcy said, end up meeting two months ago, it is something enforced. If somebody come complain, obviously if somebody come complain. About the house, about the water, about the roof, uh, roof, uh, leak in the roof, wherever, it's still in the system, they can come to complain. And the city can do something, it's like, it's, it's already in your housing code, it starts what, six, seven, eight years ago, wherever it is. So I'm talking about. That change that we're doing now, I don't see how this is gonna be any difference or better, because it's already in the system. So you're gonna try to do something better or to add something, only thing that adds is, we're gonna have, like we already talked, we're gonna have to pay all of these high fees. And yearly fees of the city are gonna make more money from that. I mean, it's not something that we actually help those people to yes complain or to not complain. We already pay everything. But we already have it. The city already have the code.
Yes, but the code is not enforced. But the code is not.
No problem, but can you explain to me how those people will not be afraid not to complain?
Some of them might still be, that's true. Some of them might still be, and I guess that's their loss. But the fact is, when they see that we as a city are working together. To find a solution and that the city is, that we've done something and we have regulations and standards that everybody has to live by. They might feel more confident to make complaints, if that's how they still feel. If they don't and they're still afraid, I guess that's their problem. But we have to do something to show them that we're going to listen and to be transparent and that there's a standard. That we're going to be holding everybody accountable to.
And if like Trevor said, if the landlords work with each other, policing each other, helping each other. And then we can work with that group as well. We can maybe start weeding out those bad apple landlords as well.
Hundred percent.
We can find out who they are and kind of put the pinch on them. They would then, but the, you know, the, the, the tenant. The tenant is the, is the game piece at the end. They can jump from here to there, to there, to there. If that landlord is being a POS, go to the next person. So, you know, so if the landlord kind of has. A ball, but the tenant has the cork.
So if, when the guy came here two months ago, I was, I'm sorry to say that, but if I was Darcy, I would say, thank you so much for your concern. Please. Speak privately either with chief of police, with the mayor, with any of them and share with them your concern. If you have to say name, you cannot say anonymously. Like, from that, it's came to all of the, nothing, again, nothing, not that I'm against it, I'm just don't understand. How this gonna solve the problem of people afraid or not afraid?
Well, if we don't try something, what are we gaining?
Again, we already have something in system.
Not, not teeth. We need you guys as landlords to be another set of teeth of us.
What we need to do to the landlord is nothing but this paper that we got today. We have to do that maybe regardless.
And this, what you got is a proposal.
What is, what recourse? What recourse does the city have, or is it even the city's responsibility to have any recourse upon that bad landlord? Who does not make improvements. The tenant has the opportunity to just say. To leave.
Right.
Not pay rent and leave. The tenants go for their dollars. Does the city have to have a recourse against a bad landlord? I don't think you can. What's that? The penalties, but if they don't, when they drag their feet and they don't fix it, they don't fix it, the penalty's one. And they're afraid to complain, they vote with their dollars and they move out. Well, and what about, what about at the end of the day where he's saying too, you have this all in place. So if you have a complaint, rather than have all the inspections and all this stuff and all this other thing that's causing all this. If you just enforce the rules, they're already on the books. Somebody comes in and complains that I have a bad unit. Send somebody from the city out, go inspect your unit and deal with it as that happens. You don't need everybody. If Bass is a great landlord and has never had a problem, there's no problem with his stuff. Why does he have to register and, and have all of that? But you can do it on a complaint by complaint basis, which you already have in your rules. Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to help you with that, yeah. And then, and then enforce it that way. If I got a crappy, if, then, then you find the bad landlord. And then you can go out and inspect these one at a time as a complaint. And yes, if somebody's not willing to complain, there's all kinds of reasons why in this community, people won't come to the period complaint. They don't know, they don't know what they could complain about or not, but you're not gonna change any of that by having me get an inspection. Or my man gets inspection.
Remind me a story, I don't know if you, Mr. The Chief, and I remember a few years ago, I called him, I tell him the house behind me. Always I see people coming in the middle of the night for like five minutes, exchanging stuff and leaving. I told him, I think it's somebody selling drugs or something, I see from my window. So the chief told me, I don't know, maybe it was before the chief, officer, I don't remember. He told me, listen, you told me something is possible, but it's not enough for me to now go to the house, break in or, or have order to go south. Cause people going, maybe somebody took cigarette, maybe somebody give them, I don't know, something from school that he forgot. So it's same idea, just because. You know, like, I don't know, we have, like Trevor said, the authority to just start to make like everybody, all of that, to find the rot, the rotten apple, like you say. You already have it in place. It's also a different way to try find the rotten apple, wherever. I'm just talking too, too much. Thank you so much.
Okay, we've got, ready, we're gonna wrap this up. So if anybody else has got something to say, otherwise we're gonna move on.
It's kinda like in school. We have rules, you know, I go to school, we have rules. And. The good kids said, why do we need rules? Well, the rough kids, you know, I mean, and I think tonight we have the good landlords here.
Sure, that, that they would always.
You know, that, that's what we're trying to, we need something so we can go after them, you know, I mean, uh.
What you already have.
Well. I think we were just trying to make the landmark clear, but, um, yeah.
Maybe there's a way to do it without hitting. Right. Good landlords too, you know, just like only focusing on the people who are making the problem. And everybody else is just trying to make it work and make it good for their town.
But I, I do like the idea of, uh. Sure, go ahead.
As far as bad, bad landlords. I would hope that enough people, enough of his tenants would complain, that pretty soon nobody's gonna rent from him. He's gonna be gone anyway because he can't make any money. That would be ideal, but I doubt it's gonna happen.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of options for them to go other places. I mean, I don't know.
Some of these people have got better cars than I do.
We, well, that, that's it. That, and that's, you know, uh. Um, but I like the idea, I like the idea of having a few of you folks and a few of us. Sitting down and I, and. And, you know, this idea started from complaints. You know, and then, of course, you guys weren't here to hear that part of it. You know, there, there's, there's this side and there's that side. So. Somewhere, somewhere, you know, meeting in the middle of the case. And although you might think this one's. Too tough. Uh. I mean, we can, we tweak this all we want. But it's better to have some of you. You know? Because you, you're, you're, you're the deal. You know, we're, we're the guy sitting on this side of the. The desk here. So, um, I think we, we need to proceed with this, you know, and then, I don't, I don't know how this piece paper is gonna look. You know, I mean, but that's what we're here for. Right? Um. Uh, so I think we'll proceed. And if you don't mind, I think, I think we really need to get off of this. You know, I mean, I, I, everybody's had a chance to talk, I think, I, I, I hope you all did it because you, you've got a chance to do it. You know, but, um. Devora said it right. We have to work towards the right thing here, you know, and, and, and it's not, we're not picking sides, we're surely not, you know? So, uh, as we proceed with this, I hope we can come, come up with something like that, all right? All right, let's, let's, let's do it. Sure.
Is it a chronic problem of complaining tenants? Is it a big, big problem in the city since we're seventy-five percent are owned by landlords?
I, I, Darcy can answer that a whole lot better, cause you know, when, when you work in this office, that's where everybody, most of the people that come in here, it's all complaints. You know, nobody's coming in here to tell you you did a hell of a good job. So. But it's, it's, it's it.
Um, I think it started because we had, um, agencies coming in. And saying they were in certain properties and things they saw. Um, it wasn't individuals because they're too afraid or don't know if they can. That's what we were told.
But we had, what, three meetings? Two for sure, three maybe, a group that probably filled half of those chairs. Insistent on the fact that we weren't doing enough to protect them from you.
And how did you address that?
Well, that's why, that's where we, that's why you're here.
But I mean, when they did complain, it's on the books to address the complaints. How did you do that?
Yeah, so, um, Dave, our housing inspector is here and he can probably answer some of those questions, but, um. We do investigate complaints. He does do complaint inspections, um. And, I mean, we do follow up. So. If you are a landlord and were inspected because of a complaint, I don't know if anyone here probably, I don't think any landlord here.
At the end of the day, you had all the complaints, sent somebody out to.
Right.
How many of those actually. Were valid? Yes, there you go, or were, were real complaints. I can piss them on all day long.
Right.
Truck isn't drive fast. We're, we're valid.
So was the.
Yes.
If those systems are working.
Yeah. What's the percentage of landlords that are problematic?
I have no idea how many there is, so I can't answer. That's part of why you get the registration, so we get an idea of who's who out there. That's where some, some, you're, sorry, in the beginning, it's, you're on the right track. It's the tweaking, the past.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And I think we need to do that. Yeah.
Were those complaints resolved?
For the most part, yes.
Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yes. We, the complaints came in, inspected, they were resolved, no one had to be. Yeah.
It's not working for everybody, and those of us that work with many different folks in our community know how terrible some of these houses are. The pictures I have seen, the conditions I see with my own eyes.
So bring the complaints.
They are too scared they won't.
You bring the complaints if you got the.
I have complaints, have I not, Darcy?
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that is.
So maybe what needs done for these people has more representation for them to, you know, be mediatingers for them. We're, we're trying to help the people, we're not trying to tax. We're, we're not trying to institute a new taxing, we're trying to help the people. So we have to do, uh, certain measures that are going to actually address the people who are getting targeted. So how can you get your tenants, and the people you work with, how do you get them to feel safe in the court? Because I think that's the trust. How do you get that?
I don't think the tenant actually absolutely has to make the complaint, doesn't it? It could be another person from town.
Yeah, it has to be in writing. We, we, you know, we want to see photographs of what they're saying, and yeah.
But it can be an advocate for the tenant.
Yeah, they can come in, and if they've got all that information, put it in writing.
They prove.
I think visual inspections, you know, or excuse me, videoed inspections. You know, you have your pictures and all, that's wonderful and great. Um, but, you know, a video inspection of all your things that are on that list that Dave looks for. And then, you know, whether it's two year, three year, if that's what we were doing.
For the landlord's a good one too, is the, the other side of what we used to do, which was video and take pictures of everything before someone moved in.
Then you can always.
Have someone who's like, this is a horrible craplord, and it wasn't when I rented it to him. And I'm not saying that people don't rent crappy apartments, but there aren't landlords out there that are bad. I'm not saying that that's not a thing, I'm just saying there's, there's two sides to the story. It isn't always that the landlord had a craplord.
No. So the question is, if the, if the bad apples are threatening the tenants and the tenants are not being, um, encouraged or allowed to come forward, how does this solve that issue?
Because regular inspections means that the, the safety of the rentals will be better. Some of these units haven't been inspected in forty years. Walk down East Williams and just look at stairs. There are stairs that are so dilapidated, they have been falling apart for probably ten to twenty years. And those are rentals. And tell me that happened from a tenant in three months stomping on stone or something. These are issues that have been going on a long time.
I don't see any of those.
I got pictures. I just walked down it the other day, walk down.
See, I'm, 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 I'm willing to, and saying that you're right on some of it, if you go the other side and realize that there's, it's a destroyed job.
Yeah, I'm a landlord, I understand that.
All right, okay, we're, we're, we're going to move on.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to item nine, then, uh, that item is water, uh, our water and the fluoride treatment that we're putting in that water right now. And this is total discussion, you guys. This is, uh, um, we've had a lot of communities now that are starting to pull fluoride. Um, and, uh, so this is, this is something just talk for you to think about. Uh, we can bring it back, uh, you know, for, uh, for a, a regular meeting, you know. So if you have any discussion on that right now, or else, uh, you could, you, uh, we can put it on the agenda for next month, and we can discuss it, but.
I think we send it to next month's agenda.
All right.
The fluoride idea was all, was there for tooth problems, right?
Yes.
And now, uh, is it that much tooth problem? I mean, is, is our city taking it out because of health risk? Too much fluoride is bad for us?
You've got a great, uh, Zach put together a really, really good, uh, statement um, on, and everything he did with those numbers, there's cost of fluoride, um, um, and the water usage we have. And the thing is, that I got out of Zach's deal was, uh, you know, we pump a lot of water, and only a little bit, so one percent of that is for drinking. So that means we're, we're treating, um, that's such a big number, I don't even know if I can tell you that number. That's like the federal government. But, uh, so, uh, only one percent that's actually getting used for drinking, all of this water is getting treated, you know. And it's very, very caustic. It, it, it eats pipes. I mean, I'm just giving you some things to think about. Yeah, um, yeah. I suppose if we got a dinner setting here, you'd go crazy, but. So, well, we'll, we'll talk about this, uh, next month, we'll just keep moving on here. All right, let's go to item ten, then, uh, public hearing for budget amendment for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, resolution number one four seven four dash twenty-five, a resolution adopting the budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Darcy?
Sure, um, so, uh, this is our first budget amendment, um, of the current budget year. And just some of the, uh, changes we are making in our amendment is increasing expenditures for, uh, police radio vest, the outfit that we had done on the car. Um, we're adding in our security cameras, upgraded city hall. And then, um, the, we're increasing our revenue and expenditures for that two thousand twenty-five general obligation bond proceeds, um, that we borrowed, and just making some changes to our transfers. So overall revenue in, out, about a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollar change. So I don't know if you want to open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Open up the public hearing. Any comments? Did we receive any written con, uh, comments?
No.
Anything from the folks out there? All right, I'll close the public here.
And then just to that resolution.
Say that again.
The resolution then to adopt.
Motion?
Yep.
Yep.
Make a motion to adopt resolution one four seven four dash two five.
Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Go on to item eleven?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, resolution number one four seven seven dash twenty-five, a resolution approving bu- budget transfers for FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
So these are the budget transfers in the, the budget and the changes for the budget amendment?
Yep. So we need a motion?
So we're approving the bills to ban, ban, right?
No, we're.
We're moving money.
Doing transfers.
Moving the money around, right?
Yep. All right. Whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar? Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, then, resolution number one four seven nine dash twenty-five, a resolution accepting work, Eastern Iowa Excavating for Construction of the Postville and Ziegler Utility Improvements Project. That what you've been waiting for? Come on. We should put you through a lot, don't we?
I don't have anything to complain about.
Oh, good.
Um, overall, I thought the project went quite well. Eastern Iowa is the first time I personally have worked with them, and I think it went really well. And, uh, we had a few big ticket change order items that had to go through, and I think they were needed. And the first one was that inline valve that we put in live at the water tower.
Yes.
That came in handy like a week later.
It was, it was, yes.
Overall went really well. Um, final project on the cost was just under five hundred and ten thousand dollars. They were substantially complete, um, end of October, um, with water to Ziegler before the official completion date. I think things went well, um.
Are you, um?
Um, yeah, oh, sorry, Andy Smith, W H P S. Any questions for me?
Pretty nice out there. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Welcome into town.
Yeah, after years, I think that, I think that worked out wonderful. And then, like you said, that, putting that valve, it's amazing how some things work out. You know, because shortly after that, we had a, we had a main break. And we'd have had to shut down the town. But with that valve, we could just shut part of that off. So, eh, you know, it's, yeah. Some things work good. All right. Thank you.
Andy.
Have a good night. So anyway, uh, uh, we need a motion for that, please. Okay, thank you, Devora, is there a second?
Sorry.
All right, Darcy?
Moore?
Yeah.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Go on to item thirteen, then, true, uh, tree removal bids.
So I had two bids laid out for you tonight. So we have seven trees that we are looking at removing. Looks like the low bidder would be Handgarder Tree Service in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The other bid was from Brink's Tree Service for ten thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
A second?
One second.
Okay, any further discussion?
What was the difference in the three trees that was so substantial, I wonder?
Uh, I don't know.
Um, let me see, I had a message from Chris, let me look. He messaged me.
In twenty-two hundred to sixty. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it says, Brink's bid for the three trees at three oh seven West Williams is a mistake. He probably only bid on the smaller of the three trees. But I would recommend giving the whole bid to Handgardner.
Yeah.
Something's not right going on.
Who was the message from?
What?
Who was the message?
Chris Hackman, yeah, he did the bids.
All right, any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, say no, all right. And item fourteen is, uh, Turner Hall Request. Um, Darcy, you know quite a bit about that.
Um, so we had a request for a family that wants to rent it on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, but they're, they're wanting to stay overnight in the hall. So the rules for the facility are from seven AM to eleven PM, daily unless special arrangements have been secured. So that's why it's on your agenda for tonight. And they would pay for two days rental.
And that was a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Or twenty-two kids, then. So they're gonna sleep there, or?
Yeah.
That's what they're saying, that's what they're wanting.
And would we charge them the in, in resident price or the out?
Um.
She says her mother lives here.
Yeah, that, it would be the in-town, yeah.
It would be in-town?
Yeah, seventy-five dollar.
I think it's the same overnight. We should turn another day, you know.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, as long as there's no alcohol, because that's part of the deal.
Police, uh, does the police pop in on them like during the night? I mean, that, not to be an intruder, but, you know, just check at ten or eleven o'clock, is there, there's no alcohol?
Normally do, if we know what's going on, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that, that'd be a good.
And is that just the upstairs?
If there's somebody, we know there's somebody.
Some whole building.
And there is a kitchen there, then? But there's no sleeping access?
What is it? No, 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 they have, they have sleeping bases, so. Do they know it's haunted?
How, how do we limit the access to where they're gonna be?
How do you do what?
Limit the access to where they're.
They can rent the whole, they, when you rent it, it's the whole building.
If the upstairs aren't upstairs.
And there's no place else they can get into?
No.
And what is upstairs?
It's stage area.
And they never went dancing up there?
Oh, that girl. But I mean, is it like a gymnasium floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's wood floor, yep.
What's the difference in the rental code in, in state, I mean, in seventy and hours?
Um, so postal residents, seventy-five dollar usage a day, two fifty deposit. Um, out, uh, other renter would be out of postal school district, one twenty-five usage, two fifty deposit.
And also, because the, the lady who's requesting that isn't from.
No, but her mom lives out at Lilac Lane, she said. So her mom would be the renter, yeah.
Her mom and the family of five, or just the mom lives at Lilac?
I just, I don't know, I didn't ask those questions. She just said her mom lived at four oh five Lilac Lane.
If we do this, you know, we're setting a precedent.
But it has to be approved on an individual basis.
You have to approve it.
And being that it's a holiday, there's a lot of people.
You can have, you can have a party from.
I think it's, I mean, it's being used.
Two hundred people.
Right.
So the traffic, you know, you, I think the maintenance, you have a family. You know, it's not like everybody is gonna come off the street to it.
What's the parking situation, though? Is there off-street parking?
Yeah, they got this.
They got them both sides.
Side parking?
In front and then across. South.
And no one leaves at the next day, right?
Not so far, no, no. Nothing's booked in there.
And that includes a cleaning expectation?
Yeah, it's, there's guidelines that they'd have to follow. It's gotta be cleaned or they don't get their deposit back.
Make a motion, Larry?
I will, we approve this request.
Second?
One second.
All those in favor, say aye? All right, or we'll say no. Okay, got that one done? Item fifteen, then, uh, one four seven eight dash twenty-five, a resolution, a resolution to appoint a representative and an alternate representative to the Clayton County E-nine-one-one service board.
Okay, and currently, um, Ben Heitlin and Matt Sir. I forgot to ask if Ben would do it again.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Will you be an alternate again?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Did you catch that, you guys?
Ben, okay.
So we need a motion?
We'll make a motion that Ben and Matt Sir for resolution one four seven eight two five.
Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen is postal childcare community service agreement for FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
So we already issued them their donation for the fiscal year, but our agreement was for last year, so I need an updated agreement. Otherwise, you're gonna be in trouble with your audit. So I sent them the new agreement, told them they had to have their board sign it. Otherwise, I'd have to give us the five thousand dollars back. You'll need to approve the agreement too.
We just need to move that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Okay, second?
One second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye? Please, opposed, say no. All right. Item seventeen, uh, police training request.
Council of the way, and if you subscribe, we're just gonna send this to you.
So this request is, uh, for me, I'm, um, have the opportunity, or would like to take the opportunity to take a certification course by the FBI. It's a three, it's a three, um, part course process. Um, you have two years to complete it, but once you get certified, it's a, it's a three-year certification. Um, basically, a leadership certification program. The first one, it would be in Clive for December sixteenth and seventeenth in December of this year. in December of this year. And then the second one I was looking at will be in twenty twenty-six, the April twenty-ninth and thir, in the thirtieth at Green Bay, um, at their police department. And then it, there's another one that has not been posted yet, but it comes back to Clive in the summer of twenty twenty-six. And that way I would have it completed. My, the courses completed for what I need to do on this certification.
Are you a member?
Not a member.
Can you become a member prior to the course?
Uh, probably could check into it. I'm not sure what membership is. Like I said, this is all sponsored by the, with the FBI.
I'm sure you missed Marshall, but that's different, right?
Yeah, it's different.
I'm okay with it. I would just check on the membership thing first.
Daniel membership is like a hundred dollars.
Is it?
Oh, you found it faster than me. I was looking too.
Uh, hundred dollars. It's a annual men, membership, so. Yeah, I mean, you get the membership and then.
It'd be worth it then because
Right.
First one and a half session.
You do what?
Well, I mean, if it, uh, only a hundred dollars to become a member, you're saving like
Saving about?
Seventy-five cents, seventy-five dollars. A hundred and fifty dollars, you're getting fifty dollars, you know?
Extra credit, yeah.
Yeah, pays you, it pays to be a member.
Right.
The FBI knows who you are.
Right.
All the objectives look good, you know?
I guess you need a motion to approve that. I move that we approve the training session, the three training sessions. Police chief metals.
Second?
I mean, I second with the idea that before that you would become a member.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no. Okay, item eighteen then is the consent agenda. Something there you guys wanna talk about?
Well, my, isn't a negative thing. The project going out to, uh, the apartment south, northeast of town, uh, is that gonna be a concrete base?
Yeah, it's, it's concrete.
It's gonna be all concrete.
Yep.
I, I just wasn't sure of how they're going about it, if that was
Yeah.
gonna be blacktop.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh.
And they didn't really have to haul that much dirt in, did they?
No.
No.
Lot of, lot of, uh, gravel, but yeah.
Yeah. You're gonna have that.
Oh, yeah, I want to do that.
They gonna lay it pretty soon?
Yes, yeah, I, I'll, I'll bet we'll, uh, they'll, I, um, it's supposed to warm up now the end of the week. I, I think we'll see some stuff happen really quick.
Cause isn't the compo site closed for a couple days so they can do that?
Uh, so they did pour the concrete through that, through that drive. So, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's a trail, I believe.
No, you have to call the sidewalk.
It's the sidewalk that go, yeah, the sidewalk that'll pass the compo site out to this apartment.
I, I heard the apartments, I thought you meant new apartments, so.
No.
Okay. So is this part of the concept?
I, I think
I would, you couldn't, no, you would tell.
Council snap, council people walking on the side of the road.
I didn't know that was
Anyway.
Cause it's in his How?
Well, you go ahead.
No.
Walk on the side of the road regardless.
Should've said it.
I don't know, yeah, we're gonna have to just keep.
Should've given it to you sooner, you know?
Can you put a little, little barriers, uh, or not?
No.
I don't mean mean barriers, but just like a, well, it's almost like a sawhorse every once in a while or at the start and the end of the trail. Uh, uh, I mean, start and the end of the roadway on the sidewalk of the road. You know, you got this little, little thing like this, which is do not, they did it when they blacked off going into the compo site. They just put up little barriers on the edge of the road that gives people the hint. If you don't tell, you can't talk to everybody.
What, what are we doing barriers for?
I don't know.
They may not.
Oh, yeah, her question is.
I think people would use it.
We put up a little turtle that has pointed this way.
Yeah.
That points to the sidewalk, you know, go something.
Two gates will do the same thing. We'll just head them into there, you know, but I, but I, I'm gonna, I've wa, I've watched these folks for years. And I'm not saying they're the same folks, so that, they're surely not. But they, they are, um, the only reason they're walking on that is because they have to on the highway, on the road. We give them an opportunity to get out of harm's way. I'll guarantee you they're gonna take.
On the sidewalk.
Yes. Yep.
So that's all the, it's only going to that driveway?
Pacific.
So the, like, the three big apartment buildings will have to walk?
No, they'll
Do that.
See, that's all private.
That's private, but what they do, what they do is they come, there's a, like a dead-end road. When you pull in Pacific, there's a dead-end to the north with the gap. Some big blocks of concrete where they go through there. And then they come out on the, out of the road. They don't go all the way down to the, like, hinkers and then come up. They cut, they cut across. I mean, on the road portion.
They're cutting inside the development.
Yeah.
They're not.
That's what I'm saying. They'll, they'll be in there.
Yeah.
They're not gonna still be out on the road.
No.
No.
No, I think, yeah. Pretty good, pretty good.
Good job.
So, anything else in there you guys wanna talk about?
Is that something that you can just go down with the skin steer with a smoke flower on it or?
We got a broom.
Yeah, I got that tool cap, you know, that, yeah. And that's just the right width for that baby. So, you know, I, 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 first of all, and I can't get into this, you know, a lot of this, but, you know, you, it was like, I took a look at that, we've all seen it. And I said, you know, the worst place, the worst place to put a sidewalk is in the bottom of a ditch. But we had no choice. This is where it had to go. But if you take a look at the way that, you know, now I can see where, uh, um, you spend, um, how many thousands of dollars in engineering fees? I mean, this project alone was, uh, Corey's is two hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And then so
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it's close to three hundred thousand by the time you get the engineering fees in there. But honestly, you take a look at that right now, and it's not, it's not that deep. It's not, it, it's, it's not the bottom of a ditch anymore. Things have been raised up. So it's not
Didn't seem like a ditch.
No, no. So it's, it's, it's all right, you know, so it'll be good.
Just so we're aware that that concrete will eat those bristles up in a heartbeat.
Well, I see bristles laying all over, yes.
Cause the ones, uh, trailed from between LG and Pyramid, they go through a broom about every year
Yeah.
to purchase, and they're not cheap.
Well, that's what I said.
Well, I'm
But
We got a blower too.
Well, we got a blower, we got a blower too.
Yeah.
Cause it's gonna get packed down like cattle past.
Yeah, those bristles aren't very tough.
But you know, I, I walk the walk path a lot, you know, and they, they do use the broom on that. I, there's, yeah, there's bristles all over.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's
But that's what they're for.
Yep, yeah. That's why they make more.
That's right.
Okay, anything else we wanna discuss or need a motion?
Yes. Yeah, so I left, uh, yeah, that's your tip report. I don't know if you have your binders at home. If you do, you can take it and replace your pages. There are some here that will replace. I don't know if you have your tip binder at home. Sorry.
Hey, DeBora, yours just got a better chance than mine, I'll tell you. Uh-oh, there goes the bell. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we need a motion to Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no, who care? Um, item six, take off the board now. Paula didn't show up.
No problem. Or I'm there.
She'll be here next month. Yeah, uh, okay. Uh, item nineteen, the resolution, uh, for money to pay the bills.
I move.
Second? Mary? All right, Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom? Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Public comment?
I'm gonna be quick. I just wanna say, I think you guys are doing your right to have this landlord tenant. Thank you for speaking up. Um, you gotta start some place. I agree.
Nora, Nora, can I, I got you, you gotta come up. Cause I'm not getting you on a picture here, so.
I just wanna say, you guys, this landlord, my name?
Yep.
I just wanna say, um, I think it's great that we're going forward with this landlord tenant resolutions. And we have to start, I agree, you have to start some of this.
Yep.
And the food pantry is moved. The ground is open up.
Yeah.
Yeah, the grounds are open. We, we will be there. And, um, we've got somebody going to sit down here and directing down there.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I get, yeah.
He did a wonderful job of fixing that place up. If you will go look at the one side that's not fixed up and then to what has been fixed up, it's a world of difference.
Cool. You're gonna have so much more room.
We do have more room. We do.
And a sink.
And parking.
Yes, and parking. So, yeah, it's gonna be great.
Are donations also at the new place or still?
No, no, all of the donations, all of the food, all the shopping, it's already real. The food and everything is there. And the people that come up, I think Waterloo with their truck, um, they know that we're down there and they'll drop.
Do you have refrigeration there?
We have our old refrigeration there. And she's going to be riding in the ranch to get a new refrigerator for one of the old ones. Yeah, so far it's, um, and every, all of this is working.
Yep.
Even into the move.
Yeah. That's always something.
We're good to go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm in F Y, and I just wanted to inform you that I've asked our neighbor to speak next week at her National Honors Society induction ceremony. He's agreed to do that.
Yeah.
He's going to tell, talk about just his service and how the pillars of character, leadership, scholarship, all of those apply to his own life and how the kids can be applied to theirs. So is that how? It'll be at the Fine Arts Center at seven o'clock. I have eight students that will be inducted into the ceremony, so.
Everybody can give us an invitation. I've asked you.
Oh, thank you. And so on the kids, I don't know, they forget. But yes, so please, I, I'm very grateful that he agreed to do that for us.
Right at the bottom of the barrel, like I said, you get, start asking me this.
Mrs. Hope would have never thunk it.
Oh, no.
Larry, Mary Jo did of course last year.
Well, they have a lot of them flipping over.
Tomorrow is Veterans Day program at school.
Absolutely.
Well, I think Joe Harrison is coming up there, so I'm sure he'll be there.
I'll be there, yeah, I'll be there, yes.
What time's that?
Ten.
Ten, yeah.
Ten, ten, you have the
At the gym.
At the gym.
At the gym.
Yeah.
And we're having council discussion.
I'm sure.
Those of you who are re-elected.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think you agree.
What's that?
Thank you for agreeing to serve me.
Yeah, well, you bet. I, I, uh, I actually this was, uh, ran out. It was, uh, honestly, a very humbling, humbling experience for me. I, uh, cause, as you know, I, I'm, I wasn't running. You know, I, and I, but I did make the comment that if, you know, if y'all wrote me in, that I would, I would accept. Um, the thing that's humbling is there was a, and I got these figures from Denise Byer that there was a hundred and fifty-seven votes, written in votes. And I got a hundred and fifty. So it's like, wow, I've never felt this needed in all my life. But, uh,
Who were the other people you know or can you say?
Uh, I'm not going to.
But I could call the
Oh, yeah. Oh, one for DeBora. No, no. So I know who DeBora voted for. But anyway, yeah, I, uh, so, yes, so here we go. And, and you ladies also, you know, so this is like, uh, four years, in, in four years, honestly, it's a while. But I don't know where, where it went. You know, it, it came and it went. So we got four years. Because I'm gonna guarantee if I live through this four years, it will never happen again. But, but, you know, we, we've got things to do.
You know, we've had a mayor who walked the streets of town every day.
Well, it's, it's, it's just, it's just that, um, but it, and it's also, it's who you work with. You know, and I, I've got a great, great group to work with, you know, and, and that's so that, it helps. This all helps, you know, and of course, you know, we, there's conflicts along the way, but this is you, we deal with.
Well, like Trevor's truck wouldn't go fast enough. They could let me drive it.
Yes.
Oops, sorry, man.
Anyway.
Had a governor on, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was Yeah.
Casey for mayor, Doc Casey.
That's on East Williams.
I know, but
No, it's not.
Well, I wanna go on the record and give Chris Hackman his appreciation that he deserves too for his, uh, wastewater operator of the year
That's awesome.
through the DNR. Um, that's pretty, pretty big deal.
Where'd you find that, Laura?
I found this in the Postville paper. And then this was in our file that I drug out, but, um, but like this Lindsay Beaman from Iowa Water Environment Association says, "A well-run and maintained public sewer system or wastewater treatment facility form the backbone of every city's public health infrastructure." So, you know, it is, you know, and, and someone, you know, with what I do on my side, he's the public wastewater. I'm a private wastewater. And so, you know, what he's doing, what I do, you know, we protect what we drink, select that fluoride in the water. That's nothing compared to if we're not taking the waste out of the water.
Right, right.
So I think it's a pretty prestigious thing for our city guy. So if you see him, pat him on the back, give him some recognition. So.
Um, do you know who started the fluoride proposal?
No, I don't.
This is Pauline Kiesew.
Oh, really? A dentist wife.
No, no.
What's that?
Pauline Kiesew was the one that started the fluoride drive proposal.
Okay.
Back in the day. Back in the day.
Yeah.
It was Julie Bunter.
She's a very active.
Yeah, yeah.
She had a cop a couple things.
Yep. All right. Okay, uh, any more comments from you guys?
I'm into that economic development in New Alvin.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I've driven through New Alvin. I didn't know there was all that stuff there. I mean, there's this huge, um, plant. It's kind of like a mini, um, Norphlex.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred chin, tons of steel. They go through and
They sure do.
And it's off this little, you know, I bought
Turn to the left when you, yeah.
And then, uh, we went, well, we went to the meat market. And then we went to their water treatment.
Yeah.
That's impressive, you know, so.
Big deal.
Yeah, yeah, it was, um, yeah.
That was, you know, he, he said, how it's going to be?
Yeah, dinner, yeah. Anyways, but, yeah, it was, it was good.
Yeah, I'm glad you
It was interesting. And I got to be up front and not as close and personal as Darcy was to the boom that went off the other day here in town.
What?